All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming. Uh, welcome to the Select Board meeting for Tuesday, May 28th, 2019. I would like to start the meeting with the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So our first point of order is I would like to reorganize the Select Board.
So I will nominate the sitting chair.
Hold on.
It just seems a little awkward that there's nobody else here.
Come on, come on, come on!
Come on, let's go!
Oh, outside.
Yeah.
Outside hanging out with the chief of police.
I'm fastway lazy.
You didn't fix the ticket for him, did you?
Saved your ticket.
Okay.
All right, so back to our agenda items. So we are going to the reorganization of the Select Board. I will entertain a motion.
So I nominate the sitting vice chair, or the sitting chair, Brendan Tedstone.
Second up?
For what position?
For the chair.
Okay. Motion's been made in second. Are there any other motions? Okay, hearing that, I would like to call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Seems like that carries. Um, so I would like to...
Congratulations, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much.
So now you're the chair.
So now I'm the chair. Great. So I would like to nominate...
I've got a couple of issues with your board.
So you're out of line and you're out of order. You are not recognized.
I should remain out of order.
You are not recognized.
That was one of my most famous lines ever.
So I would like to nominate Mr. Cuttino as the vice chair to the, uh, to the Select Board.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor? Wait, nope. Are there any other nominations? I hear none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? So that carries. Congratulations, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Does he recognize yet?
I don't care.
He is the chair emeritus. Um, all right, so next is our volunteer recognition.
Your public form?
No, I'm sorry, public form already screwed up. Uh, so the residents are invited to share their ideas, opinions, or ask questions. Is there anyone in the public that has any questions? Please.
Uh, I would like to, uh, just want to talk about, um, something. Sustainable Green Committee, uh, came forward a number of years ago with great acclaim and accomplished a lot for this town, and it is now defunct. And I would very much like to reactivate the green, Sustainable Green Committee. I'm willing to serve. I had actually applied, uh, over a year ago and just got the form letter back. I did not hear anything else, just that form notice that, you know, my application has been accepted. And I am willing to get involved in a big way, um, and, and, and come on even to chair it. Uh, and I think, you know, it's very interesting to me that actually in our town report, we had listed with John Mosher as the Board of Selectmen representative. You know, uh, we all know John hasn't been on the Select Board for a while. Uh, so, and I think, uh, given climate change and, uh, everything else, that we should be doing this. Hopkinton, I mean Hopkinton-Holliston and Sherburne both now have a part-time sustainability officer on, on staff in town. Uh, I talked with an eighth grader, I substitute in the public schools. I talked with an eighth grader today who said, "Is it really true that the world is going to be ending in 11 years?" I have the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change Report and was very concerned. So I think we owe this to our children, our grandchildren, to do whatever we can to create a sustainable Hopkinton, and I'm willing to serve in that capacity.
Mr. Kamala.
Through the chair, thank you so much for stepping forth. Um, please, if you may, give Maria your contact information. We will contact you tomorrow and then update you on the status of that.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, who should I give my info to?
All right. So before we go any further, I would like to recognize Mary Jo Lefrenier, our newest Select Board member, and offer our, uh, wholehearted condolences, but, uh, congratulations. Uh, congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome to the board. We're glad to have you here.
It was fun.
Welcome.
Uh, and I want to apologize for being a little late. I took a header coming out of the house, which sometimes happens, and, um, so I'm a little slow-moving right now. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm okay, but I'm, but it was a surprise.
Well, we're glad you're all right.
Thank you.
Um, so volunteer recognition. Mr. Kamala, you have the... Yes.
Yes, under open forum.
Open forum, yeah.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Maria Glynn, she's always busy. May you please join? I know this topic, Mr. Chair, is, uh, scheduled for later during the agenda. However, because of Maria's schedule, I thought I should do this now.
Absolutely.
Um, thinking back, Brian Hay, you may remember, the first time the, uh, the town formally ran the Invitational Program, uh, through the new Marathon Policy, uh, the town raised approximately 180,000.
Right.
Here tonight, I want to present Maria to the board as the spark plug behind the...
Spark?
Yes, the, the spark plug behind the heavy lifting that goes on to make the Invitational Program the success that it has become. Uh, we will learn later that this year, that program raised 327,939 and 90 cents. So this is a program, program that has grown substantially, starting off at 180,000, and I really want to thank Maria for doing the heavy lifting. Uh, she does this behind, uh, the scenes, doesn't come to the meeting to receive the recognition, and I thought this was the moment to do so.
Awesome. So I've only known Maria in a professional capacity three years and one meeting, and I will say she is an absolutely an invaluable resource. Uh, any questions I have, I bounce off her, she gets me the answer. If she doesn't have it, the tip of her tongue, she gets back to me in a moment. So I couldn't do my job as a select person, uh, Select Board member...
As one of the select...
As one of, as a member of the Select Board. Um, and I appreciate everything you do, and, and thank you, Mr. Kamala, for bringing this to us. It's, this is one of those things that I'm so happy to be able to, to, uh, talk, and I know how uncomfortable you are, which makes me even happier. So thank you very much, Maria. You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
I'm sure Mr. Herr would like to have a comment on that.
I think that, uh, with respect to the marathon and the numbers and the doling out the numbers and keeping that, all that organized, uh, you've done a fabulous job. Obviously, the numbers show that. Uh, just look at the, you know, bar graph, the line graph over the last few years, how the numbers have grown, uh, but to Brendan's point, Maria does everything in Town Hall for us, and sees our eyes and ears in many cases, and it really helps an awful lot and makes my job an awful lot easier, and I'm sure it'll make your job easier as you get going, and for others as well. Uh, and we certainly appreciate everything you do, especially the marathon and raising all that money by organizing, organizing all that. It's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Jo?
Well, I'm, I've been on the Marathon Committee for 35 years, and I just, I owe you heartfelt thanks for organizing this, and when I look at these runners and I know how much time and energy it, they have to put into just running this race and then to raise this kind of money for all of these wonderful, wonderful organizations, I owe you a great deal of thanks and a thanks to everybody involved. Thank you.
Cuttino?
Thanks, Maria, for everything. You know, you're, you're always there whenever I call Norman Sell, and I can't get a hold of him or something, you track him down for me, and I appreciate it. And, um, you know, and, you know, this is, this is over and above, and this is, this is where people don't understand how much the, uh, marathon is part of the, um, fabric of Hopkinton. You know, it being, you know, over 100 years now of, uh, being part of Hopkinton, and, and how much money that, that is, does come into the town for it. It's just, it's just amazing. Here it is, you know, over, over, um, $327,000 right here, not to mention the money they give us to, to hold the event and the other money that goes to the schools and all the other events that they, they help us with, and thank you for being a part of it. It's, uh, the town owes you a debt of gratitude.
Thank you.
Mr. Nasrula?
Maria, I think, you know, you're the perfect example of, uh, of what keeps this town running. Um, you know, for us, I get, I get my reports from you, I get, uh, notices, and you're the eyes and ears, you're the person that we go to, and, um, I think it's wonderful that we get to honor you today and recognize, uh, recognize all the work that you really do. Um, a lot of times, it's, it's the people in the background that really make this town work, and, uh, I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you all. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Maria.
Thanks.
Is Ann Matina here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, we'll hold, we'll hold off on it. Uh, we'll move to the consent agenda. Select Board will consider approving the April 23rd, May 6th, 7th, 15th Board of Selectmen minutes. At the time, it was the Board of Selectmen. At the time, it was the Board of Selectmen. Uh, number two is gifts. The Select Board will consider approving the gifts, uh, as written. Um, and that's it. Anyone want to carve any of those out? I'll move the consent agendas written. Second? Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Hmm? Any discussion? Oh, is there any discussion? Before we're all in favor or not? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Carries. Uh, 7:05, we seem to be a little ahead of schedule, which hasn't happened for a few years. Um, let's see, what do we have?
Wait till official.
Is the, let's see.
A peer.
Mr. 20 is here. Is the, do we need, uh, do we need, can we do the 7:45 agenda item right now?
It's not supposed to be a public hearing.
Yeah?
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. 20, are you ready? Step it up.
Good evening.
All right, so this is a Common Vic Trawler's License. Startline Brewery, 151R Hayden Row. Uh, the Select Board will consider approving a Common Vic Trawler's License for Edward 20 on behalf of Startline Brewery. Uh, operations include a small marketplace to sell their own-grown produce, snacks, non-alcoholic beverages, and dry goods, local dairy, prepackaged food, and prepared food-to-go. Food service with prepared food on-site consumption and single-serve-to-go. Mr. Kamala.
Through the chair, I believe, um, Ted is better placed to introduce the project. This is a project that, uh, we have sent to the permitting offices. Uh, we have received positive reviews. I did meet with the inspection team this morning. Uh, they are satisfied with the progress regarding the construction going on, uh, and, um, the recommendation from staff is that this request be approved with any conditions that the board may deem necessary.
Okay. Do we have any discussion on the board?
This is the kind of package that I like. Tight, neat.
I have no comments. I'm not sure if Mr. 20 has any. Mr. 20?
Well, thanks for the floor. Thanks for everybody. Greetings and welcome to the new Select Board.
Thank you.
Um, I wanted to, uh, thank you for your time. This is really a pretty administrative application. Water Fresh Farm is no longer, uh, Phil Tadaro, the Tadaro family, the primary owners of the farm, are now business members of Startline Brewing. So we're simply here today to ask for that same permit, the Common Vic, to be updated in Startline Brewing's name instead of Water Fresh Farm's name. We still plan to operate as we were operating before in the market and consistent with Startline Brewing's application that was approved about this time last year for our expanded pouring permit. So there's no changes I'm requesting to the alcohol, to the premises, to the operation. The only change that we're, we're asking for consideration today is new ownership and license holder for the Common Vic associated with the property.
Okay. Select Board members have any comments? Mr. Nasrula?
Um, I think this is, this is great. I've enjoyed it. Um, a couple of questions. Are you, will alcohol be served in the, uh, the former Water Fresh Farm area?
Yes. So, um, last April, uh, with a 5-0 vote from the Selectmen, just before your arrival on the Select Board, um, uh, we came for an amendment to our pouring permit here through the town and have a new premises map that includes basically all of Water Fresh Farm's footprint, um, from the bathrooms to the cafe to the, uh, former taproom that we had indoors, as well as a, a new event space in the back of the property and an open-air patio in the back of that property. So the answer is yes, uh, the, uh, it would just be our beer. We're farmer brewers, uh, and our license is different than a traditional Section 12 alcohol license, so there'll be no spirits, there'll be no wine, it'll just be the beer we make on property as part of our agricultural products that we're offering.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, that beer will be available. We do have a privacy wall set up, if you will, for separation of families that desire the distance from the bar, uh, based on some feedback we've received over time, and, um, and so I think we've, we had a well-thought-out plan that we aren't changing today that had already been approved, and, and that is, does include beer being, um, consumed throughout the premises.
Okay. Mr. Cuttino?
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with this. I'm, I'm glad that the expansion's finally happening.
Thank you. Us too. It's been a long year.
No more setbacks?
Yeah. All good. Yeah.
Thank you, thanks for experiencing.
And we still have a, a couple more weeks of, of hard heavy lifting to do, but we're painting walls as we speak and getting down to the, the final touches on it, so we're almost there. We will be back, as a side note, in front of you again within a few weeks, because our membership's changed in the company, we have another formality to do with the alcohol license, the pouring permit, just update the membership, just like we are with this in effect, so, uh, you'll see us again soon, and hopefully we'll see you down at the place as we get open.
Perhaps, you never know.
Yeah, yeah.
Herr?
Um, I had a chance to take a brief tour one afternoon, evening, I think, probably more evening, um, to check it out. Looks great. I think it's coming along nicely. Um, are you going to still be doing the breakfast sandwiches in the morning?
We are not, until, until, we hope in the fall to open up Saturdays and Sundays at least.
Okay.
But, uh, the nature of the business having, uh, we had to make some choices, so we will be opening at 11 o'clock midweek, we'll have coffee, um, and, uh, we're, we're planning to add breakfast sandwiches and even a brunch into Saturday and Sunday hours as we get our feet underneath us and open the place up, but not at the get-go in June.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Lefrenier?
Oh, I just have one question. Can I get my jug refilled?
Absolutely.
Okay. No, I've, I've looked over everything, and I know you, you have, um, your tip certificates and, uh, looked at the dimensions of the floor plan, and it looks great.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. We're fortunate that this town's been so supportive to our business, so, thank you.
All right, so I will request a motion. Do we have a motions doc for this?
There we go. The motions are complicated. All right, so, um, I'd like to make, make a motion to approve a Common Vicure license for Startline Brewing Company at 151R Hayden Row.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Or is there further discussion?
Yeah, would, anything left on that?
All right.
This is not a public hearing, right?
No, it's not a public hearing.
Yes, it's just a sitting discussion.
All right. Further discussion? Hearing none? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained? Okay, carries? Thank you, Mr. 20.
Excellent. Appreciate it all. Good luck, Ted. See you all soon. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion that we have move our Select Board meeting to their patio once they open? So moved.
Well, it's only, if only for H Cam? With H Cam.
I think we can probably do this Parks and Rec Horables Parade a little bit ahead of agenda. Uh, the Select Board will consider approving a parade permit application from Parks and Rec. Representative Dan McIntyre for July 4th Horables Parade to be held on Monday, July 4th, 2019, from 12 till 1:00. The parade will start and end at the Town Common. Applicant will coordinate traffic patrols and road closures with the police. Expected number of participants is one to 100. I know that there will be at least two, because Danny and Colleen will definitely both participate, so that's a bit misleading. Um, so, this is a parade that's gone on for years and years and years, so, um, and we've been lucky that, uh, Mr. McIntyre has, um, offered to take it over. So do we have any discussion on the board?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Herr?
The, uh, public safety folks are here with us this evening. I assume they are good to go with this, uh, as had, they have been in years past.
Yep, we'll do a typical review like we do.
Okay.
All set, thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
In, uh, respective of a former member?
Yes.
Is there going to be litter control?
Yes, there will definitely be trash control. I will go on record to say that Dan McIntyre will pick up any trash if we need be.
Excellent.
Excellent. Good point.
All right, hearing nothing else, I think we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the parade permit for the Parks and Recreation July 4th Horables Parade.
Second.
Okay. No more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained? Carries?
Mr. Chair, I would suggest that somebody reach out to Mr. McIntyre and make sure he doesn't come over here at 7:20 since we're...
I can do that, right here.
Maria's off to do it there.
Oh, right, Maria. Okay.
Maria's on it. She just needs this one. That little spark plug, she just took off to go do it.
Uh, let's see, so we are about 10 minutes away from the Weston Nurseries, and I don't see Mr. Mezat here, so we're going to hold off on that.
Ann Matina has arrived.
Oh, Ann Matina has arrived.
The star of the evening is here.
All right, so, we will jump back to our volunteer recognition, and, uh, Select Board will recognize the contributions and volunteer services of Ann Matina. Mr. Kamala?
Yes, through the chair, um, Jean Betsman, member of the Volunteer Recognition Advisory Team, is here to make the presentation.
Okay.
Hello.
Hello, Jean.
How are you?
How are you?
Uh, congratulations to all of you.
You?
I am here on behalf of the Volunteer Recognition Committee, is that what we're called?
Group.
Group? Um, to recognize Ann Matina, and I'm going to read you the nomination form because she's been involved in far too many things for me to remember off the top of my head. Uh, and plus, yeah, so, okay. Um, Ann has a long history of volunteer service to the town. She's an active supporter of many local charities, including Live Forever, the Timlin Race, the Respite Center, Brown Dog, and many more. In addition, Ann has taken an active role in many town boards and committees, including MLK Day, serving as chair of the 300th Anniversary Celebration for the town for several years and accomplishing critical early-stage planning and co-chairing the Historical Home and Garden Tour. She's a regular and thoughtful contributor at town meeting and arrives informed on the issues and ready to contribute to discussion. Ann is currently the president of the Hopkinton Historical Society and is tireless in her efforts to provide engaging programming, carefully manage the preservation of the building and, and its treasures, and create a sustainable budget and program for the future. Most recently, Ann spearheaded a new initiative designed to benefit all Hopkinton charitable organizations through her Hopkinton Gives Giving Tuesday program. Ann created a website and a logo for all local charities to, to use to allow them to solicit needed funds for their own organization, but also to serve as a vehicle for them to support each other in the process, thereby expanding their exposure and membership base. Ann is an active and engaged citizen. She provides thoughtful leadership across multiple organizations with the purpose of preserving town history and promoting town unity. She works tirelessly in each of her many roles and is a true inspiration to those who work with her. Ann represents the very best of community engagement and support and is amply deserving of recognition for all that she has done for the town, so I hope you will join me in saying thank you to Ann.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ann, a couple of things you'd like to say to us, or...
Um, I didn't prepare a speech. I, I just want to thank Jean for nominating me and you all for supporting that nomination. I'm really honored to be, uh, here tonight. Um, uh, Jean knows this, but I, I just came off of nine days of jury duty, so I'm, uh, a little tired of officialdom, I have to say, sitting, sitting in a chair, listening for hours on end, but, uh, was grateful. The judge at the end of it came and thanked us all, and he said, "I just want you to know that this is, uh, the highest civic duty in addition to voting you can participate in." And, you know, all these years I've been trying to avoid actually serving on a jury, but I, I concurred with him. Um, I, I feel like everyone has, um, a responsibility to their community, both their small community, their home, as well as the larger community, and, um, I'm grateful for all the opportunities I've had to do so here in Hopkinton.
Well, thank you very much, Ann. Uh, it's great to have someone like you in front of us. This is the real easy part of our job, is to recognize people that do great things for the town, so I will start by saying thank you very much, and, uh, your hard work and, and countless hours that you give to the town is, does not go unnoticed, so thank you very much.
Thanks.
Uh, so I will open it up to the board, start with Mary Jo.
Well, I, I just want to say thank you very much for your service to the town.
Okay, Mr. Herr?
Ann, thank you for your service to the town. Uh, I've been doing it a bunch of years, and I go to lots of different things. I've done, gone to lots of different things over the years, and you're always sort of popping up.
Right.
Sort of in the background a little bit, not out front, not giving the speech, but you're always there, and I'm always looking and saying, "There she is again." It's kind of like certain people, you know, you just see out and about, and I do see you out and about in a lot of the civic engagement activities, and really appreciate everything you do, and I know Hopkinton does too, so thank you.
Mr. Cuttino?
Again, I, I reiterate, uh, the appreciation from us on the board and, and the town. Yeah, I, I go to a lot of stuff, and it's just like Brian says, you are in the background doing something, helping out somewhere, and that's just, it's just great, because, you know, a, a, a town has, you know, the town of paid, um, professionals, but a town can't work without, without the volunteers and, and people like you that make it work, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's well-deserved.
Thanks.
Mr. Nasrula?
I just want to say thank you, um, for all the work you do. You know, we moved back into Hopkinton, so all these activities go on, and, um, it, it took a while for me to really get my head around that people are volunteering to get this stuff done.
Yes.
And, and you're right, you said, when you say that it brings the community together, it's, um, it's like family, you know, when, when you have someone who kind of drives you have someone who kind of drives that family, it kind of keeps everyone together. And I really appreciate your keeping the family of Hopkinton together.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Kamalo, do we have any... I have a... So, in front of me, I have a certificate of appreciation from the Town of Hopkinton. This certifies that Ann Matina has contributed significantly to Hopkinton's quality of life through her volunteer efforts, as recognized by the Select Board, and is therefore awarded this certificate of appreciation, given on this 28th day of May 2019. Signed Brendan Tedstone, Chair, Norman Kamalo, Town Manager. So...
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ann.
Thank you, Jean, for doing the legwork there. All right, so...
Mr. Chair, as your self-appointed parliamentarian, I wanna comment on the swift manner in which we are working through the agenda and congratulate you on your efforts.
Thank you, sir. I hope it continues for the next...
And I'm keeping you in order whether you like it or not.
Okay.
We have a public hearing at 7:30, so we have plenty of time for that.
That's true.
Mr. Mezat's thing is not a public hearing, but I know he wouldn't be here. I think he is, he is here.
Yeah, he is.
So, you're doing a fabulous job, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And as your self-appointed parliamentarian, I will let you know when you're not doing a fabulous job.
Appreciate that.
Have I said I'm a parliamentarian? Yes.
That's good, that's good. All right, so if Mr. Mezat's all set, we don't, we can go five minutes early, right?
Yes, please.
Yeah, get used to that.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Mezat, come on up. So, Weston Nurseries Wholesale signs within the public right-of-way. The Select Board will consider approving three signs for Weston Nurseries requested by Peter Mezat on behalf of Weston Nurseries, Inc. The signs would be located on town-owned property, the right-of-way of Franklin Road. The signs will mark the entrance to a new wholesale building. The request is for one sign at the intersection of Legacy Farms North and Franklin Road. The area would be maintained, it would include plantings and lawn area. One sign that says Weston Nurseries entrance, approximately three foot by four foot, located at the driveway entrance to the building, and one sign at the original entrance to the wholesale yard saying deliveries only, main entrance ahead. This would be similar to the three-foot-by-four-foot size sign at the entrance road. Mr. Kamalo.
Yes, um...
No, Mr. Mezat.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Do you want me to explain it in more detail?
Sure.
All right. Did this make it around?
Yes.
Okay, and I brought pictures too. I don't know if you guys follow this.
Good.
Oh, you got the pretty ones. They just gave us the...
Oh, you want the...
No, no, that's fine.
Okay. Yeah, so, basically what we're trying to do is, this is a town-owned property right here, where Legacy North curves up the hill, and Franklin Road cuts off, and our entrance is about 125 feet up here on the right. So, we were interested in putting a sign right here that would not block views from any direction, and unlike how it is depicted here, wouldn't say entrance there, would say that on the other side. It would just have an arrow on the other side, basically saying take a left, take a right. And then the entrance sign would be slightly smaller. Same look, right at the entrance way.
That's good.
And we have just constructed, moved in last September, a new wholesale building that's right here, and I sent pictures of the entrance.
Yep, we got a...
Road as it exists today. So, you can kinda see there's no sign there, and it needs to be signed, and it needs to direct our customers.
Excellent. Mr. Kamalo.
Yeah, through the Chair, we have reviewed this request extensively, and had some discussions with Mr. Mezat. Our suggestions to the Board are as follows, namely that your review and interest focus on location, public safety, and common good benefits. In addition, that the design review board should review the design aspects of the application. I've also discussed that should the Board be inclined to allow this request to move forward, that the Board considers granting the Town Manager the authority to negotiate and execute a license agreement. License agreement allows the sign to be on public property. The license agreement can address the use of town property, required insurance, indemnification, utilities if there are any, and how that agreement can be terminated. It also allows this process to move forward expeditiously. Unlike a lease, a lease may require town meeting approval. A license, as we've heard before, can be executed by the Board of Selectmen.
All right, do we have any comments from the Board? Mr. Nasrula.
Yes, um... Do we have a bylaw on off-site signage?
My understanding is, yes, there is a bylaw. However, in this case, the location is on public land, and that's why this issue is before the Selectmen.
Okay. Mr. Cutino?
No, I'm good with this. You know, it's improving that little spot of land, just like the greenery on the way coming into town. Some people were visiting us for Memorial Day, and they pulled off the highway and they said, "Awesome! Now, why don't more towns do what you guys did by, you know, decorate the center of the, between the two roads?"
You tell them they don't have a Weston Nurseries?
No, actually, I just said, it was a lot of organization. But, you know, so thank you, so I know that this area will look even better with that sign there.
Mr. Herr.
So, Mr. Kamalo addressed my questions that I jotted here about insurance, liability, on the signed bylaw. He just answered a second ago what Mr. Nasrula raised. Peter, are you okay with this license agreement, or the concept of a license agreement?
I don't know what it is, really.
Have you heard that before tonight?
No, well, this afternoon I heard it.
So, it's a doc, it's not a lease, but it's like a lease. It's just called a license, and it says, "We're gonna license the land, the use of the land to you and your organization, and all these things have to be covered and carried out." So, it's very similar to a lease agreement that you would do in a business transaction.
Is there a term to it?
There would be terms to it, I would think.
No, I mean a length of term?
No. In fact, with the license agreement, the term simply is that the town can terminate the agreement with notice.
Okay.
We don't have to specify a term.
It's a good tool for us, if we wanna support this, to say, "Go ahead, let's figure it out." But just us saying, "We go ahead and support this," there still has to be a tool in place. There's gotta be some mechanism to manage it and control it, because it's town land, right, taxpayers' land. So, I think it's a good approach, but I'm not surprised that you haven't heard of it yet. But I do think that something like that needs to get sorted through, so. That was my only other question. I think it's a great idea, and I'd love to see it get done. You guys are a great, you know, part of the community, and you've got some nice things that have gone on in the back there now. Let's point them out to people, so it's good.
Mary Jo.
I have read this over today at home, and I'm looking at the pictures, and I really think that it's a fine idea to allow the signs, but I do think we need an agreement. A licensing agreement. It's a town, it is town property.
Right.
Okay. So, if I hear no more conversation on this, I'm ready for a motion.
Okay, I'd like to make a book...
Just a moment.
Through the Chair, anticipating, Mr. Nasrula, that you may have been wondering whether this requires ZPA special permit, because it's off-site. It does not, because the use concern falls under Chapter 40, Section 3.
Falls under? I'm sorry?
Yeah, yeah, it's Chapter 40A, Section 3.
Okay.
So, with that, I'd like to make a motion to allow the signs for Weston Nurseries within the public right-of-way as proposed, subject to the executions of a license with the town relative to the sign location, and provided that all other necessary licensing and permits are obtained.
Second. So, I have a second.
Okay, second.
Okay. I would never speak without your approval. So, Mr. Kamalo, we wanna do this. I think you're gonna, you can feel it. We haven't voted yet, but I think you can feel it. And we wanna get license in place. I mean, if you think about the business they're in, it's in the landscaping and hardscaping business to some extent, and making it look really great. So, they're not gonna have some junk out there, making his business entryway look really bad. So, we wanna approach this, and I know you would, with the idea of getting it done, and not making it onerous so that we can't get it done. You know what I'm saying? I would not say that would be you, but perhaps some lawyer somewhere might wanna get involved and make it difficult. We don't want it to be difficult.
I can assure the Board that we have already contacted Town Council, and it's clear the terms will cover the topics that I raised, i.e. the use of the land, the insurance, indemnification clause, termination, and utilities if they are at play. It's a simple one-page...
It doesn't seem like a very onerous process for me to do it all. Okay.
I'm all set, thank you. All right, so we have a motion and seconded?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to add a friendly amendment, just from the discussion I heard. I think we left out in the motion that we would give the Town Manager authority to negotiate the terms of the license, indemnification, utilities.
Go with that, Mr. Kamalo.
Yes.
You'll put that in your motion?
I'm doing it with it.
All right, any more discussion? All right, ready for vote? All in favor for the motion with the friendly amendment as read? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we're all set. Thank you, Mr. Mezat.
Thank you, Brendan.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
So, the 7:30, we're not ready for. The 8 o'clock, we're not ready for. Looks like we're ready for the Town Manager report.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna step off for item one of the Town Manager's report.
Okay, appreciate that. Mr. Kamalo.
I, through the Chair, I wanted to bring to this Board's attention a request that has come to my office through the School Business Office, namely that Select has been discussing with the School Department installation of a solar system at the Hopkinton Marathon School. This discussion has focused on, one, confirming that the project was properly procured through a consortium that was put in place, I think back in 2016, to do these kinds of negotiations on behalf of solar companies. Two, we also wanted to confirm the discussions between the school district staff, as well as Select, relative to the terms that could be included in a PPA agreement, Power Purchase Agreement. Thirdly, we also wanted to confirm the credits that may accrue to either Select or the town through this process. We had a meeting last week that involved the Chief Procurement Officer, the School District Staff, as well as the Town Council's office. We believe that this is an agreement or a proposal that eventually could be beneficial to the community. And therefore, tonight, I'm asking the Board to authorize the Town Manager's office to negotiate an agreement that will allow this to move forward, certainly with input from Town Council, as well as the School District. As part of our discussions, there was also mention of a possible pilot. We did clarify that a pilot to be in place would require town meeting approval, as well as support from the Board of Assessors. In addition, we wanted confirmation that Select had received the authorization from EverSource to do the interconnection. Yes, that has been secured, and thus, the need for this project to move forward expeditiously. Again, specifically, what I'm asking for the Board is authorization to move forward and negotiate some terms that I can bring back to the Board for your review, relative to allowing this project to move forward. You may be wondering, why is this project before the Selectmen, when in fact it's on a school roof? The project is before the Selectmen because the Selectmen are the only Board in town authorized to sign leases.
Okay, so I know that Select had been involved in the Marathon School as I was sitting, a sitting member on that Board, and they offered to donate an entire solar array on the school to begin with. So, I've known Ken Driscoll for a long time. He and his company are very, they're very much an outstanding company, and I know that Ken's motives are pure. So, I speak wholeheartedly in favor of Select, Ken Driscoll, and his employees. That said, I will open it up to the Board. Mr. Nasrula.
Good. All set, thank you. Yeah, I just, I love when local companies come up to, you know, again, it's, we're just talking about volunteerism, and here it is, is another, here's, you know, companies, you know, coming in to make town and schools better. I think it's a great idea. Mr. Kamalo, thank you for negotiating on that.
Mary Jo.
Not clear as to exactly what we're doing, which is being new here. We're authorizing the Town Manager to negotiate with...
Select.
Select, okay, all right.
Yep.
Yeah, fine with it.
So, Mr. Kamalo, what does he need from us? Do you need a motion? Do you need us just to say, "Go ahead"? What do you need from us?
I think a motion would be helpful, authorizing the Town Manager to negotiate a Power Purchase Agreement with Select, with input from Town Council, as well as the School District Office.
So, moved. Second?
Second.
Second?
Oh.
So, moved and seconded, all right. Any further discussion?
So moved, I don't...
Okay. All right, so I think we're ready for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? And one abstention, Mr. Herr, who has stepped out of the room, which has closed doors, so he's not hearing this, he is not near us, he's, there's nothing to do with this.
I was giving you the high sign to do the second, Mary Jo.
All right.
I was giving you the high sign for your first second.
So carries. Can we grab Mr. Herr for this?
He's good?
Yeah.
All right. Let's see, so the Main Street Corridor Project. Mr. Kamalo.
Yes, as the Board may recall, early March, I think mid-March, the town submitted the 75% design to MassDOT.
Yep.
That design incorporated feedback and comments that we had received through the public process in town. In addition, we also had had meetings with utility companies with regard to what they would require of the project. Consequently, also with the passage of time, the cost of the project has gone up.
Imagine that.
Yes. Up until last week, our assumption was that, since this project is already on the tip, and the items that are contributing to the increase in cost are considered participatory items, therefore, our anticipation was that MassDOT and the MPO and the state would fund the increase in costs. We learned towards the end of last week that, yes, that's the case. However, the town has to advocate for that. To that end, we sent a letter to the MPO, and I've also sent letters to Senator Spilker, Representative Dykma, alerting them of the need, and again, to be specific, the increase in cost is estimated to be around $1 million. And again, it's due to the changes in the design, the increase in costs of the items that are included in the project, the requests from utility companies, and these items are considered participatory. In other words, they are funded by the state and the grant. So, I wanted to let the Board know that on May 30th, we will be heading to Boston to advocate for the additional $1 million, and I've asked both Senator Spilker and the Representative Dykma's office to be present for that presentation.
That was my question of what the increase was, so it's a million dollars. Mr. Herr.
So, this $1 million, which is to cover additional stuff, and being in the construction business, I understand it happens, but if we were to somewhat limit the scope of the project a little bit more, and maybe shorten some of the exterior sort of far-reaching ends of this thing, would that help in this, with this challenge, or no?
It would. In fact, part of the reasons, part of the reasons why the cost is going up is because MassDOT expanded the scope of the project over the last month. For example, when we submitted the 25% design, the project ended right at the border of, I think, two Wood Street. However, during the 75% discussions, MassDOT requested that the project extend further down on Wood Street. So, we're going back to MassDOT and asking them to reconsider.
Yeah, if we could pull back on Wood Street, if that could lower our cost situation and improve, you know, other aspects of the project, I'm all for it.
Agree with you 100% on that. Mary Jo, anything?
I have lots of questions, but they're for later date.
Okay. Mr. Cutino? Mr. Nasrula?
Just for the clarification on this $1 million, this is being, we're gonna be requesting that the million be given from the state, correct? Am I understanding that right?
That is correct. We have already submitted a letter.
So, this will not, there'll be no impact to the town paying for it, correct?
We don't want that to happen.
Okay. Go forward and concur.
Do you need muscle? We can always send the Chair.
Yeah, should somebody go with you guys?
If somebody's available, that'd be fine. In the past, I did rely on participation by members of the Planning Board. Ken Weizminter was always available.
Sure, someone on the Board will be welcome to join you.
I can make myself available, if you can just give me, give me due notice thereof.
You don't need anything from us, you need a motion on this, right? That's just an update?
Yeah, just an update.
Okay.
If we were to vote to shorten the project a little bit, would that help you, or no, at this point?
At this point, let's hold off on that decision. We wanna hear from MassDOT whether they'll accept the recommendation.
We haven't deliberated my suggestion that we do this, but... We haven't deliberated my suggestion that we do this, but just reading the tea leaves, my sense is that we could shorten it a little bit, and no one would care, but again, we're not voting it tonight, but I just think that that could solve a lot of challenges.
Yep. I tend to agree with you.
Very good.
All right, Town Meeting Review?
Yeah, I really wanted to take this opportunity to thank the Town Boards, Committees, and Commissions for a very productive annual Town Meeting. Because without saying that the success of the meeting would not have been possible without the hard work of the towns' volunteer teams. I also want to take this opportunity to thank the Town Staff, including Department Heads, who worked tirelessly to make sure that the information required for Town Meeting to be conducted successfully was available. We clearly still have some room for improvement. As I've said in past years, I really would like to have the Town Meeting documents, all Town Meeting related documents to, oh, Connor's still here, yet to be available at least 10 days before Town Meeting. We are inching towards that goal, but I'm hoping we can be more successful in meeting that target. I also want to thank the volunteer teams that worked during Town Meeting, including the Town Moderator, as well as the counters, whenever we needed votes to be counted, they were ready. Last but not least, Town Meeting went for three days, and the turnout on all the three days was very strong. It may have been strongest on the third day. Usually, you expect the turnout to go down, but that was not the case here. And it goes to show why I think Hopkinton is a great community. I feel honored to serve here. Townspeople care, they are committed, they are engaged, and they are knowledgeable. I will tell you, watching that Planning Board, that discussion of, I think, the Planning Board articles regarding Osmot was fabulous. For any student of local government, for anybody who loves democracy, that's a video to watch. The way how Town Meeting went through the questions and eventually came to a solution was fantastic. Again, want to thank the townspeople for making the Town Meeting very successful.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kamala. So, moving on to Liaison Reports, we can start it. I know we have a public hearing at 7:30, but we can start this. Kamala, have you got anything?
Is in reports? No?
Okay, this is where we kind of start breaking it down and trading our baseball cards here?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
So, all right. So...
PD, FD.
F.
Okay, I'll take P.
Okay. So, we are going to now kind of break down our liaison list for fiscal year 19 with the Sitting Board. So, how do you want to do this? You want to go through this one at a time? You want to go through who owns what?
Just go top to bottom.
Top to bottom?
Got it. Pick it up when you have to.
So, we will go top to bottom, and we will exclude the column on the, columns on the far right, Norman and Elaine, because I don't imagine those are going to change, correct? So, the first one would be the Appropriations Committee. Nope, that's Norman. Board of Assessors, that's Brian. You good with that?
Um, I think...
If there's anything you want, you got to jump in, because I'm just going to say yeah, because we've done it.
No, I would really like to be the liaison to the Board of Assessors.
She may have it, Mr. Chair, if it's okay with the rest of the board.
That's all my expertise.
That is more than okay with me.
That was an obvious one, right?
So, Mary Jo's the Board of Assessors.
Okay.
All right, so next, you guys are jotting this down, right? I don't have to. The next is the Town Managers Budget Advisory Team, which was Brian and Claire. I imagine that this is something that the Chair needs to jump on, or can it still be?
It can't be Claire.
I know it can't be Claire.
Yeah. I think the Chair should be involved.
Good with that? All right, so we'll do that.
That goes in line with the School Committee Liaison Generalist, right?
Yep. Good. The Capital Improvement Committee, Erfran, you good with that?
I'll stick with it.
All right. Mary Jo, if there's any, any of these other ones that you want, you got to jump right in.
I hear you.
All right. You're going to get plenty, don't worry.
I've known you for a long time, I've never known, need to be shy.
He knows me.
Let's see, the Fire Department, I am going to take that one over.
Oh.
Lucky you.
I'll take Police.
I liked it.
Uh, let's see, so Board of Appeals, that's John. You all right with that?
Yep.
Okay. Concom is me. I am going to have a kind of an exaggerated load this year, so I would be willing to give up Concom if there's someone that wants it.
I'll take it.
Okay.
Is that Mr. Mishra?
Mr. Nasrullah?
That makes sense.
Okay. Planning Board, Mr. Nasrullah, you are a standing member there, are you good with that?
I'll stick with it, sure.
I like, I like you being on that, since you are a member of, actually, I think everyone except you.
Isn't that a stepping stone for us? It used to be.
Board of Health, John?
Yeah, I'm good with that one.
Good. Permanent Building Committee, Erfran?
Sure.
Okay. School Committee, that is going to have to be me and Mr. Herr.
Yep.
Good with that?
Yep.
Okay. Keefe Tech School Committee, that was me, I will stay on that, if that's all right. Cemetery Commission, was Claire.
I'll do it.
Mary Jo now.
Dead end.
Moving right along.
Nice, John. Just stick to sitting there looking beautiful. I'll do the comedy. The Council on Aging was Brian.
Yep.
You got to stick on that?
Yep.
Okay. Next, we go to the ADA Oversight Committee, Erfran?
Sure.
Okay. Veteran Celebration Committee, you are not getting that away from me.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. I will fight over that one. Tax Relief Committee?
I've been on it for a number of years, and I'm a founding member, so I will...
There you go. Seconded, so moved. Cultural, Hopkins and Cultural Liaison, Erfran?
Sure.
Okay. Marathon Committee, Brian?
Sure. Well, wait a minute.
I'd like to do that, because I've been on it for 35 years.
So, you're going to step off that committee now, right?
I'm off it, yep.
Yeah. Okay, I'm fine with that, she takes it.
Okay. That's Mary Jo. You guys all set over there, keeping up? All right, good. Let's see, where were we at? The Marathon Fund Committee is John.
Yeah, that's me.
That's you.
I've been on it for 100 years, so what the heck?
It's another one I've been on for a million years.
We keep that kind of separated, though?
Yeah, separated.
There's some money involved there.
The Public Library, that was me.
I'll take that.
Okay, Brian, that's you. Parks and Rec was John.
I'll stick with that one.
Youth Commission, Erfran?
I can stick with it.
And the CPC was Claire.
What are we doing on your, where are we on your list?
I'll do CPC, if you want.
All right, I'm just going to stop right there.
Yeah.
So, Mary Jo will take CPC?
I'm familiar with it from assessors, so...
All right, so I see by, we're going to have to take a break from this, I see by the clock, it's 7:30. Next on the agitem, on the, next item on the agenda is a public hearing for, posted public hearing petition for joint pole location Cedar Street, Verizon, New England Inc., and N-Star Electric. Request for permission to locate poles, wires, cables, and fixtures, including the necessary anchors, guys, and other such sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public ways. Cedar Street, as written to us.
Mr. Chair, I move the Board of Select, I want to open a public hearing.
Second.
You need a vote on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained, carried, all right? Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Sherri Story, I'm here on behalf of Verizon. It, we, it's in support of a joint petition between EverSource and Verizon to place a pole on the westerly side of Cedar Street, and that's approximately 1,200 feet from the northerly centerline of C Street. The butters have been notified. I don't know if you have any questions that you'd like to ask?
Mr. Chair, if I could go?
Sure.
All right, Mr. Herr. So, this is to, once again, I'm sorry, to move a pole, or to...
But it's a new pole placement.
New pole placement?
That's correct.
What's the reason for the new pole placement again?
The reason, EverSource has asked that we place a new pole, if you see, this is last October, I have copies, this pole is basically leaning.
Got it, yep.
It has a lot of heavy equipment on it, and they're proposing to place a pole directly across from it, as sort of an anchor, so to speak. I think they also are intending to replace that pole in place, so it will be a new pole, and then to anchor that, there'll be a pole directly across the street. There is a lot of, a lot of equipment on, on that pole.
Got it.
So, as somebody, I don't know, is this, are we able to talk there?
Sure.
Okay, as somebody who has, who has driven on that road for years, I will agree with you that that pole is leaning, I will also tell you that that pole is probably no more leaning at any more of an angle than any of the other ones are.
Yeah.
And our, our concern has been for a long time that if one goes, they're all going to go. And, you know, we've...
The recommendation was made to us from EverSource, it is a Verizon pole set area. Verizon owns those poles, so it's really not, we're not really able to, they, they're asking us to fix, to make this correction, and it could be that, you know, they may ask to, you know, have others corrected in the future. At this point, this is, seems to be, it looks pretty bad to me.
Yeah, they're all pretty bad.
Yeah.
So, a concern that I would have is, first of all, you're not going to leave us with the double pole, correct? You're going to, it's replacing the pole, and will it be replacing it at that date?
Yes.
So, the day you put that, the other one will go away?
That's right.
So, we won't have a double pole?
That's right.
Concern that I have is, knowing that that land is wet, 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 when you put another pole in there with the same equipment on it, chances are, it's going to go the same way, and what it's going to do is probably pull the pole across the street with it.
I, I think that's, I mean, I think that's the purpose of both replacing the pole and placing one across the street to anchor it. You know, short of, of a really lengthy, I mean, it's a, it's a very lengthy street, short of them asking us to replace, you know, numerous poles, at this point, they're just asking us to make this one correction. So, you know, again, it could happen in the future, I, I can't say for sure, I'm not, I don't have that information, but right now, it's this one pole that they're looking to correct. It's, it's an older pole, most likely, I, I'm imagining, because it is, it's leaning quite a bit, and I think replacing it with a newer pole and placing, you know, putting a pole across the street, as, it's a stub pole, as an anchor, I think that that would be a reasonable solution for this particular issue.
And that, that pole across the street, that wire will not have any impact, no possible impact on traffic going by for height and things like that?
No, not at all, no.
Mr. Kamala?
Through the Chair, question on that aspect. So, we're now going to have wires across the street?
Mm-hmm, yes.
We're trying to move away from having wires across the street. Here on Main Street, we're trying to bury the wires.
Yes.
Well, I mean, I'm not sure if there are any, if it is crossing the street anywhere. I can't, in this particular shot, I don't see that it is. It is a reasonable correction to make in this kind of situation. You know, obviously, they would be sure that there's clearance, and there would be no issue with clearance at all.
And through the Chair.
And they're really, they're really, it wouldn't be impacting, you know, any residential properties, there really aren't any residential properties that directly abut this location. It's vacant land owned by the town where the pole would be placed.
Through the Chair, what other engineering alternatives were considered before making this choice?
Right now, this is the best solution that's been offered. I don't know what other, I'm not an engineer, so I'm a right-of-way specialist, I deal with kind of the go-between, between property and the engineering, so I'm not, by the time it gets to me, the decision has already been made, what they want to do. If it's not acceptable, then, then, you know, I would go back and discuss with engineering and see what other options they would have. Personally, I, I don't, you know, it's happened, occasionally, when you have an abut that may not want an additional pole, you know, blocking their property, I don't really see that that's, that's an issue in this case. I think it's a, it's a good solution to correcting a pole that's in desperate need of, you know, of support. And pulling it back with, with a guy or a pole brace on the same side of the road, I think it's, it's just going to, it's going to go the same way. It needs to be supported across the street. I don't know if anyone would like to have a copy of these.
I think we have those in our packet.
Okay. I took this myself this morning.
Yeah, yeah, those are different.
Did you guys have this one?
Yeah.
That shows where it was staked, I believe, in the packet that came, they showed where it was staked.
Yeah, I'm looking at the pole, which is, which is across the street from here, and it's leaning some, but it's not leaning half as much as the pole to the north or south of it.
Yes.
And that's, that is a real problem.
So, okay, yep.
So, if, you know, you, you live in this, in this community, obviously, and you're familiar, if there are other poles, then I think, you know, we can, we should definitely address it.
Yeah.
And, and correct it while, while, you know, it's in season, this is the construction time of year, and if it needs to be done, then we should, you know, do it. This was the pole that was brought to our attention by EverSource.
Okay. Mr. Herr?
So, I appreciate you coming this evening and presenting this to us. The challenge has been that there have been many predecessors of yours over the last several years coming to us about other issues in town with poles and things like that, and it's always turned into a bit of a tense discussion, only because the town is very frustrated with the pole situation in general. And here we are, basically saying, we're going to take one pole that's bent, and we are going to straighten that as part of this process, right?
Right, yeah.
But then we're going to add another pole across the street and put a high-tension guide wire across to hold this one in place, and I can see why we'd want to do that. But what that does is, we're just adding another pole to an infrastructure that the town is already struggling with in general. And that's my frustration with this. I don't know if there's an answer other than voicing my frustration with this, but we have talked about lots of other poles with lots of other representatives, and I don't think they've all been addressed. In fact, I know they haven't all been addressed. So, I think we're probably going to have to figure this one out tonight, but if you could just message back to your colleagues, the town of Hopkinton remains frustrated with the lack of attention to the double poles in town, the leaning poles in town, and adding poles in town. We don't want more poles, we want less poles, right?
I think that's, you know, in some of these lovely communities, I think that's a big frustration, not only for yours, but for a lot of, you know, a lot of them in these suburban areas, you know, it's more poles, you know, you see them as ugly, but they are kind of a necessity unless, you know, you want to rip up Route 85 and go all underground, which I don't think is viable option.
No, we'd like to do that, but we'd like you guys to pay for it. Because we are right outside this building, we are undergrounding all these wires, and the taxpayers are paying, if I remember correctly, $3 million or some number like that, to make this happen outside Town Hall, through our center of town. So, we're getting rid of poles here, and now a half mile down the street, we want to add a pole. So, that's the frustration I'm expressing.
I mean, it is pretty rural out there, you know, you're, you're not, you know, in the center of town where there are businesses, it's very rural out there.
I understand. Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Catino?
Yeah, if I may, but to Mr. Herr's point, so we've got, we've got a whole row of poles on this side of the street, and now we're going to stick another one right on the other side. And as much as it's rural, people like that rural look.
I know.
You know, and, and, you know, and what if it, you know, what if, you know, what if they both start to do this? Then it's going to really look bad. And then, and then to Mr. Herr's point, and to, to the Chair's point, you know, we haven't had great response. So, if they both start doing this, and then we, and then somebody comes in front of us, et puis quelqu'un vient devant nous et dit que nous ne allons rien faire jusqu'à ce que les towers of peace soient fixées. Vous savez, et donc, je... Vous savez, en étant un ingénieur et Mr. Hur aussi, vous savez, nous savons que c'est nécessaire, que quelque chose doit être fait. Mais, vous savez, pour leur faire voir si c'est possible en mettant une filtre à l'extérieur de la route ou quelque chose de ce type, s'il y a autre chose qu'ils puissent faire autre que de mettre une autre pole sur le côté opposé, je voudrais vraiment qu'ils...
Savez-vous ce que la route publicitaire est sur cette rue?
Monsieur Lazarus?
Non.
Je suis juste en train de me demander. Je veux dire, il semble que la pole peut être cinq pieds à l'extérieur de la route. C'est une route assez large. Vous savez, une filtre peut être mis sur la propriété privée à ce moment. Ils peuvent être douze, quinze pieds longs. Ça peut être un problème, je ne suis pas sûre. Je veux dire, c'est possible.
Mr. Kamalou?
Pour la considération du Conseil, je recommande que ce méta-pile fasse revenir les autres. Je pense que nous devons avoir quelques discussions concernant d'autres solutions d'ingénierie. Nous avons aussi eu des demandes avant Verizon concernant la relocation des pôles à Haddon Row. Et la réponse a été vraiment, vraiment décevante.
Je suis désolé de le dire.
Oui, donc, encore, selon les questions posées par le Conseil.
Je n'ai pas été impliquée dans, vous savez, aucun autre projet dans ce village. Donc, je ne suis pas familier avec les autres problèmes que vous avez eu.
Oui. Mr. Masurou?
Oui, je concorde avec tout ce que j'ai entendu sur ce Conseil. Et avec les suggestions de Mr. Kamalou. Je serais vraiment intéressé à savoir quelles autres solutions d'ingénierie ont été même considérées et quels autres peuvent être faites à part ajouter des pôles. Je suis d'accord avec vous, ça semble être en forme. Ça est tendant. Le commentaire de Mr. Cutino sur avoir deux qui font ça est aussi quelque chose de très préoccupant pour moi. À propos de la nature rurale de cette route, c'est ce qui est beau, en mon opinion. Et je voudrais pas voir une pole, mais nous voulons de l'électricité. Donc, je veux vivre avec ça. Mais pouvez-vous...
Oui.
Pouvez-vous nous aider, s'il vous plaît? Et au moins, vous savez...
Je fais mon mieux.
Considérer d'autres options. Il doit y avoir d'autres options.
All right, pourquoi ne pas, vous savez, je peux revenir sur l'ingénierie. Et, vous savez, si vous voulez me... Qui je dois passer à eux? Nous pouvons avoir une sorte de réunion de site possiblement avec l'un des ingénieurs sur le projet. Et, vous savez, peut-être serait beaucoup plus productif de discuter de ce type de choses avec quelqu'un qui est knowledgeable en ce domaine parce que c'est pas moi. Je ne suis pas une ingénieure et je, vous savez...
Donc, je vais m'interrompre sur mes commentaires parce qu'ils ne seraient probablement pas productifs. Donc, je vais soumettre ça au public. Y a-t-il quelqu'un qui a une conversation ou des commentaires pour le sujet en main? N'ayant aucun. Donc, je... Faisons une motion pour fermer la réunion publique?
Mr. Bureau, je suggère que nous laissons la réunion publique ouverte, mais continuons-la jusqu'à ce que le staff ait eu l'occasion de travailler avec les représentants de Verizon pour explorer d'autres options d'ingénierie. Je ne pense pas que cela exige une motion.
Ça ne requise pas une motion.
Donc, nous ne ferons pas actuellement?
Donc, nous n'avons pas d'action, non? Donc, c'est fini?
C'est une bonne idée.
Merci.
Donc, qui devrait... Je ne peux pas me contacter avec eux.
Dois-tu avoir un code?
Je ne le sais pas. Ils ne me donnent pas ça. Ils me laissent juste sortir.
Nous devrions les remercier pour ça.
Je sais.
Je n'avais aucune idée de ce que vous aviez à faire.
Nous contacterons le nom fourni dans l'application.
Oui.
OK.
Oui. Je serai en contact avec lui demain et je vais lui dire. Et puis, nous allons avoir un ingénieur avec vous et essayer de trouver une autre solution si ce n'est pas acceptable.
Excellent.
OK, merci.
Merci. All right, donc, revenons à nos rapports de liaison. Je crois que nous sommes arrivés à CPC. avons-nous assigné quelqu'un à CPC? C'était Mary Jo ou...? C'était Claire?
Non, je pense que j'ai dit, oui, le réservation.
OK, donc c'est Mary Jo. La Commission historique de la ville de Woodville, c'était Claire.
Mr. Bureau, je suis désolé, revenons un instant. Le CPC, est-ce que c'est une position de vote? Est-ce que le Conseil apprend ou est-ce que c'est une position pure de liaison?
C'est une liaison.
Désolé?
C'est une liaison.
Juste liaison, OK, merci.
La Commission historique de la ville de Woodville, c'était Claire. Mary Jo?
Well, I just joined the historical society.
There you go.
So, I guess I'll try it.
Bang, bang, bang.
Et le prochain, le Commission historique?
Yeah.
There you go.
And historic.
Et la Commission historique, la Commission historique de la ville.
I knew it, I'm into history, I talked to John Palmer.
Il est un bon ressource. Voyons, liaison BAA, c'est John.
Oh, I would like that.
No way.
There's no way.
Donc, quel est le... Quel est le titre? Est-ce que c'est le liaison de la BAA?
Why do we have that? It's new, why did we decide we needed that?
Oui, nous l'avons besoin pour de nombreuses raisons. Specifices à les obligations contractuelles et autres choses.
OK.
Mais c'est une position de liaison.
Correct.
Oui, c'est pourquoi je vous parle juste pour...
Juste pour être sûr, c'est tout.
Voyons, donc...
Ça fonctionne bien, Brian.
Jumpons à l'advisory team de la centrale de réutilisation des écoles. Est-ce que... N'avons-nous pas dit que Claire allait rester là? Oh, c'est parti?
Le conseil était...
All right, il a été dispo?
Dispo.
OK. Voyons, le liaison de la sélection de la commission d'élèves, je suis désolé, le liaison de la sélection à Hopkinton Schools Athletic Field Subcommittee. Bien sûr, ça va être Brian.
Tu vas faire plus de sports, Brian?
Je ne sais pas. Je ne suis pas sûr que ce comité est actif à ce moment, mais je suis heureux de rester avec lui.
Bien sûr que oui. 26.2 Foundation, c'est moi, je vais rester là. Committee de construction des écoles élémentaires, c'est juste fini, nous nous rapprochons maintenant. Je resterai là. Upper Charles Trail Committee, c'était John. Est-ce que c'est toujours John?
C'est toujours moi.
C'est toujours John?
Je pense que vous allez avoir à rejeter moi à la fin du mois.
Nous verrons. Commission de préservation ouverte, c'est moi, j'aime ça beaucoup. Fund de logement affordable, c'est ERFRAM.
Je resterai là.
Le MAPC?
MAPC.
MAPC.
J'ai appris à M.A.P.C. quand j'ai travaillé avec les états dans ça. Donc, je peux prendre M.A.P.C. si vous le voulez.
Est-ce que Mrs. Wright serait intéressée à rester avec ça, nous savons?
Oui, en fait, c'est un appointment de town manager, ça ne doit pas forcément...
Oui, c'est un appointment de town manager.
Oui, nous allons voir ça en comparaison.
C'est normal.
Continuité est bonne là-bas dans cette position. Si elle est intéressée, je supporterais ça, mais pas... Pas de disrespect.
Non, non. J'étais là pendant comme quatre ans, très loin. Très loin.
Le Metro West Regional Transit Authority, c'est Brian, restez là.
Oui.
Le représentant de Hopkinton 2030?
C'est moi.
C'est John, vous êtes bon avec ça?
Oui.
Irvine Tidower Properties Advisory Group?
C'est moi.
Et le groupe Pratt Farm Master Plan est Brian.
Oui.
C'est tous, n'est-ce pas?
Nous faisons quoi avec ça? Vous ne faîtes rien avec ça, Brian?
Non. Water.
Water.
Nous avons essayé tout ce que nous avons acheté pour, personne ne veut faire ça.
OK. Donc, c'est tout, c'est tout, non?
One question.
There you go.
Où était-elle? Oh, la centrale de l'école. Il dit une nouvelle position et c'était Claire. Qui avons-nous décidé qui allait être là?
C'est défunt.
C'est défunt, oh, parti. OK.
Newly defunct.
Newly defunct.
That's what I thought you said. But it wasn't.
Il n'est plus avec nous. All right, donc ça est fini. Fini. Des items de plan de Conseil futurs?
Je n'en ai pas.
Hello? All right. Donc, ça nous laisse simplement avec les... Les employés en bleu. Les appointments de staff. Le Conseil de sélection va considérer de promouvoir le détective Bill Bouchard et l'officier Arthur Schofield à la rangée de sergeant comme recommandé par le chef Lee. Chef?
Good evening. OK. Donc, nous promouvons ou demandons l'apparition de deux sergeants. Tout d'abord, je vais commencer avec l'officier Schofield.
Start up, sir.
Il est le jeune, le gars jeune.
Yes, he is.
Je pense que vous connaissez son père, je suppose. Vous auriez peut-être manqué.
Je ne sais pas de quoi vous parlez, je suis un médecin.
Laissez-moi commencer en disant que c'était un processus très compétitif avec un test écrit et une interview ordinaire. Vous savez, avec l'aide de l'H R, le chef de l'extérieur d'une autre communauté, ainsi que le adjoint chef Bennett. Billy et Arthur sont allés au top dans le processus. Ils ont fait, vous savez, un excellent travail dans le processus, en ordinaire et écrit. Et leur carrière, laissez-moi juste parler un peu de l'author. Il a grandi à Southborough et a ultérieurement assisté à UMass Lowell où il a obtenu un diplôme de bachelors en arts libéraux et sociologie et a un diplôme de justice criminelle. Il a rejoint le département de la police seulement en 2014 et a terminé son formation à la police Redding. Pendant son temps en patrolleur à la police de Hopkinton, il a eu plusieurs postes dans l'organisation comme officier de formation de terrain, officier de prévention de crimes, coordinatrice de boxe, officier de licence de véhicule commercial, administrateur de match et officier de SEPT. Je crois que vous êtes tous familiers avec le SEPT, prévention de crimes, la design environnementale, c'était l'un de mes objectifs. Arthur a été choisi de header ça. Et il a fait un excellent travail travaillant avec les entreprises et consultant-elles sur les besoins de sécurité. Il est aussi un officier de permise de feu. Et c'est mon plaisir de vous présenter pour votre considération. Mais avant de dire ça, il... Arthur est ce qui exemplifie l'essence de la police de la communauté. Et il a fait un excellent travail dans ce sens. Mais il a aussi montré un grand talent pour sa capacité à diriger, surtout dans cette rôle de FTO où nous avons plusieurs officiers qui ont fait un excellent travail de ça. Je suis sûr qu'il peut gérer être un sergeant. Et il sera assigné, s'il est accepté, à la division de patrol sur le jour de la nuit.
Good night.
Arthur.
Officer Schofield.
Yes, sir.
How are you?
I'm good, a long time no see.
Yeah, how you been?
Good.
Donc, pourquoi ne pas nous parler un peu de toi? Je n'ai pas souvent le temps de vous mettre au banc. Je prendrai full advantage of it.
Je veux dire, le chef a couvert beaucoup de choses, juste sur le local. Je n'ai pas fait beaucoup de dogmnes, donc c'est OK. Avec l'école de bord. Mais oui, je suis de Southborough, j'ai été ici depuis environ cinq ans. Et je suis un homme de bonne personne. Et, vous savez, je essaye de me mettre dans les yeux de les autres. Et je pense que c'est un rôle important, vous savez, dans cette communauté, interagir avec la communauté. Et, vous savez, je essaye de me dire ce que... Vous ne pouvez pas demander aux gens de faire quelque chose que vous ne voulez pas faire vous-même. Je pense que c'est un rôle important de la leadership. Donc, c'est juste un peu moi-même.
Donc, je vais aller en premier, si vous ne vous inquiétez pas. Donc, j'ai connu Mr. Schofield depuis qu'il est venu. Je n'ai jamais eu une interaction avec lui qui n'était rien d'autre que professionnelle. Malheureusement, je n'ai pas eu de dealings professionnels avec lui. Mais toujours professionnel, toujours proactive, vous savez. Vous savez, quand il voit mes enfants à la... Nous ne disons pas le poisson ou n'importe où il vend le poisson. Mais toujours juste, vous savez, juste un grand gars et une grande addition au département. Et je pense que comme quelqu'un qui sit sur ce Conseil, vous savez, les deux canons devant moi sont... Je suis très fier de pouvoir potentiellement promouvoir. Donc, je vais passer à Mary Jo d'abord.
En fait, je ne sais pas l'officier Schofield, je l'ai jamais rencontré. Donc, je le rencontre pour la première fois ce soir. Je suis impressionnée par les recommandations du chef. Et je vous remercie.
Merci.
Mr. Hur?
Donc, il y a beaucoup de gens dans le département de la police de Hopkinton auxquels le chef peut choisir pour ces choses et passer par le processus que les autres engagés ont fait. Et voir que deux gens sortent est génial. Il y a beaucoup de bonnes personnes là-bas. Donc, je suis sûr que c'est une décision très difficile et certainement une qui est bien reçue après un processus que je sais être assez rigoureux. Donc, félicitations à vous et j'espère que vous servirez comme sergeant ici à Hopkinton. Merci.
Merci.
Mr. Cutino?
Oui, pour rétaper ce que Mr. Hur a dit. Je sais que c'était un processus difficile parce que nous avons vraiment beaucoup de bons gens. Mais ça dit beaucoup que vous êtes ici depuis un temps court et que vous êtes vraiment monté dans les rangs et avez fait un excellent travail. Vous savez, j'ai été en watching. J'ai toujours été un advocate de la police de la communauté. J'ai toujours parlé de ça. Mais le grand truc à propos de notre département bleu est que tout le monde se met à l'occasion quand nécessaire. Et ça a eu lieu plusieurs fois. Et nous avons un grand département. Donc, félicitations et j'espère travailler avec vous.
Merci.
Mr. Masurou?
Vous savez, j'aime voir les promotions de l'intérieur. J'aime voir que, vous savez, quelqu'un se met à travers les rangs et compétitif et gagne. Gagner ça. Donc, je pense que, vous savez, vous avez traversé un processus rigoureux. Je pense que c'est une recommandation du chef Lee, ça porte beaucoup de poids avec moi. Et je suis excité de voir que vous restez.
Merci.
Donc, comment faisons-nous ici? Attardons-nous?
À la parlementaire, je suggère que le bureau prendra une à la fois.
OK, donc je trouverai mon dossier de motion ici. All right, donc je...
Okay, then, let's see.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion to...
Oh, just a moment, please. No secrets. If you didn't bring enough for one, don't bring enough for all of us. All right, Mr. Cutino?
I'll make a motion to follow the recommendation by the chief Lee to promote Detective Arthur Schofield to the rank of sergeant.
Is he a detective or an officer?
An officer.
Right now.
Officer, from officer to sergeant.
Officer to sergeant. Bill's lead detective.
Second.
Any further discussion? OK, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Point of procedure, I don't know, is there a, is there like a pinning procedure? I've been, I've been, my brother's a law enforcement officer, and I know there's a pinning procedure to go along with this, so.
Guys can come out, sir.
Come on up, family. And chief, to your point, uh, the reason this nose is so pretty is because I never did play hockey against his uncle.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Good job. Good luck.
Moving forward. Chief?
Next up is Detective Bill Burchard, who will be the senior sergeant, out of the two. Uh, Bill's been on quite some time, um, starting way back in nineteen ninety-five as an auxiliary police officer. But Bill was born August thirtieth, nineteen seventy-four, grew up in the town of Hopkinen. He was on the football teams, uh, team, golf team, uh, for Hopkinen High, as well as playing concert and jazz bands.
Yes.
Well-rounded.
Fancy boy.
Take a look at this one. After graduation, he spent a year at Bridgestone Academy, College Prep School in Maine, where he played football, and was a member of the ski team. Bill has received a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Westfield State College and spent ti, uh, nine years in the Army Reserves, rising to the rank of sergeant. So, this is his second time around to be promoted, if it happens. He was a member of the Hopkinen Auxiliary, nineteen ninety-five, two thousand and two, be, before coming the first person sponsored, uh, to the Boylston Police Academy. Upon graduation, he was hired as a full-time patrolman by the town of Hopkinen. Activated by the Army Reserves, February two thousand and two, Officer Burchard serves in the Tenth Mountain Division in Fort Drum, New York, and attended the air assault school. He has been part of the Semlek SWAT team, which is our local, uh, regional SWAT team that Bill's been, uh, a very, uh, important member of that team, has been on many callouts, and I've heard nothing but praise from his, uh, regional leaders. Uh, he's also been a failed, uh, training officer for the department from two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and sixteen, again, showing those leadership qualities that has prepared him to become a sergeant. He currently serves as a detective, and he handles court prosecution for the Hopkinen Police Department since two thousand and sixteen, which is a very, uh, difficult job, handling all the cases, uh, responding to court, uh, getting warrants signed by, uh, judges, working with attorneys, and he certainly has handled that responsibility. Uh, and I'm, I'm sure you're all aware that I've decided to create that position because it's important to the rank of sergeant, which he won't be getting, he's going midnight. His personal, uh, decorations include receipt, uh, a receipt of the First Responded Recognition Award from the Municipal Training Academy, and the Matorious Service Award, and the Mother Against Drunk Driving Award. He is, uh, with his, his wife Margaret have two boys, Colin and Sean, and he currently lives in Upton. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Detective Burchard for your consideration.
Thank you, chief.
Mr. Burchard?
Mr. Tedstone?
Would like to say a few words to us before we make our decision on you.
Well, as, uh, as you well know, I've grown up here, had grown up here since, uh, first grade. I've known you and actually a couple of selectmen for a very long time. Um, there's only so much you can fit in the bio, obviously. I was in Boy Scouts, I was in Troop One Cub Scouts, uh, known Mrs. LaFreniere for a very long time with that, and, um, just, it's been my pleasure to, to work here. It was my dream to, to obviously work as a police officer here from the, from the very get-go, and then, uh, just working towards, uh, rising through the ranks.
All right. So, I can confidently say that there's not a person in this room that has known you longer than I have, um, and I will touch on a few things. So, uh, Bill has always been a leader, uh, with his, uh, with his friends, with his peers. Growing up, he was always level-headed. Uh, I found him to always do the right thing regardless of what the pushback was from those friends. Um, and, uh, Bill never wanted to be a cop in any other town but Hopkinen, which I find, um, as an outsider, probably the hardest thing to do, to go out and, and just wanna be a cop in your town and do the right thing with your peers. I find that to, just to, to show how much character Bill does have. So, in the, uh, in the, well, I, so I wasn't always as nice to Bill, so I have to kinda be nice now. He was friends with my baby brother, um, but I, uh, I, I, with, wholeheartedly can't endorse somebody any more than I endorse Bill. I've known him for, you know, most of his life, since first grade probably, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Nasser? I gotta mix it up.
Officer Burchard, I haven't had much opportunity to meet you, but, um, the accolades that I'm hearing from, uh, from our chair and from the chief, um, is, is quite encouraging. I think, uh, it's, it's, it's really neat that you're from the town, um, you left, you served, and, uh, came back. Sounds like you're an all-around Renaissance man, playing jazz, and, uh, at the same time busting criminals, so.
Who picked it, yes.
He's like Ron Burgundy, but different.
And, uh, I'm a true jazz geek myself, so that carries a lot away from me, so, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Catino?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm just very pleased to see this, you know, to, to, uh, reiterate both the chair and, and Erfran's points. You know, it's, um, it's so important to have homegrown talent. You know, we've got it here on the, we've got it here on the board, and, you know, to, when Mr. Tedstone, you know, speaks of you, he's known you your whole life, and that's important to know. And, but it's, but the same, same thing, you've known the town your whole life, and that's important to know, and, and it's important for, for other officers that are coming in, that you can, you can, um, uh, train them and, and, and lead them to, and give them, you know, good information, inside information on what's happening in the town and, and shorten stuff. Um, it's just great to, to have you, uh, moving up the ranks and doing exactly what you wanna do all your life. It's fabulous.
Thank you.
Mr. Herr?
Uh, I think it's great, Bill, that this is your next role here in Hopkinen. I think it's well deserved. Your resume speaks for itself. Your service to our country speaks to itself, and thank you for that service, too. Um, you know, it's a great opportunity for the town to take somebody from home and bring them right on through, so it's a great opportunity for us as a community, and we speak on behalf of the community, and certainly for you and your family, and I think it's a great fit. With that said, please excuse me for a couple minutes, because we need to do a little business here, too, uh, so, don't, I don't wanna rain on your parade or anything like that, but I need to ask him a couple of questions about money, because that's also part of our job. So, tell me about the two sergeant positions now, both budgeted for FY twenty?
No, one was bu, budgeted for FY nineteen. We're just filling, uh, that, that now.
Okay.
Because we, we, when I created that position, it was to add a sergeant to the ranks, so we didn't hire, uh, an extra person. We also included the two part-time SROs in that.
Okay.
And this next one is for twenty twenty, uh, for the Detective Sergeant's position that was passed that, uh, this past town.
So, that's in this budget? So, we have a position from last year, Mr. Kamala, that didn't get funded, or didn't get filled until this year, but was funded because it's still part of that budget from last year, and we have a position for this year, and it's funded because of the budget for this year. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Bill, thank you for putting up with me, but that's part of the job. Thank you, chief. All set?
No problem. Thank you, sir.
Mary Jo?
Oh, I just, uh, I wholeheartedly support Mr. Burchard. Um, I have known him since Boy Scouts, since he was a Boy Scout and his dad leads, and his whole family, and he has always been a people person. He's always acknowledged, even from the time he was little, he was a leader in Boy Scouts, and he will, he continues to be a leader. I am extremely impressed with his military background and Tenth Mountain Division, quite a group, and, uh, I can't say enough about him. He's just a great person, and I'm so glad he's from Hopkinen, for Hopkinen. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I will entertain a motion, uh, if someone would like to make a motion on Mr. Burchard's behalf. Oh, okay. Mary Jo?
Yeah, cool.
I was gonna say, I'll make a motion that through the recommendations of Chief Lee, we accept the promotion, or we promote Detective Bill Burchard to the rank of sergeant.
Second. Okay. Any more discussion? Hear none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And abstentions? Good. So, before we do the handshake, I think I kinda dropped the ball on that last one. Why don't we go ahead and have whoever's gonna pin you come up and pin you, and then we'll handshake you? All right?
Look at this.
Why don't you tell us who you got here?
Oh, no. Awesome. You got your best one.
This is Sean.
Excellent opportunity for competition.
That's awesome. What do you think, Sean? Pretty cool, huh?
Hey, back. I could get him right now for taking away your Xbox.
He's chucking himself on TV. Grab the taser. Awesome.
All right. Great job.
What about there?
I want to kiss later.
Congratulations.
Good job. Yes, it's got some photos. Okay. Let's move over. Let's do our usual. So, chief, I don't know if we can get video rolling, but Mr. Burchard does a real vanilla ice dance.
I'm getting some. 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 I'm getting some.